Okay, I think we'll get ready to start the meeting. I call this meeting of the Divine Independent School District Board of Trustees to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that a formal ordering is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and notice that this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Department Code, Chapter 551. Let the record show that Trustees Henry Moreno, Carrie James, Chris Davis, Carl Brown, Renee Frida, Alvin Housen, who needs a present. Would you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you bow your heads, please? Father, thank you so much for the many blessings of this time of the year that you give us, the little coup de weather that we're enjoying so much. We thank you for the blessings of this district and the many people that work so hard to make our district the success that it is. We pray that you'll help us in all our deliberations, the things that we need to look at and the many decisions that are needed. We pray that you bless our office staff, our central office, and the directors, all of those that make the decisions daily, for the things that make this district work as well as it does. We pray now that you'll bless us as we go forward in this meeting, bless those that are here tonight, and bless them as they go home. Keep us all safe. In your name we pray. Thank you. You may be seated. First, we've got Dr. Granger.
So could our five campus superstars come down here, please? Okay, as you may or may not know, October is National Principals Month. Principals are a vital part of our children's education as they set the academic tone for their schools by working collaboratively with teachers to build high academic standards, set performance goals, and utilize our best practices to achieve these goals. Through visionary leadership and tireless pursuit of success for each student, principals guide and support their schools in ways large and small every day. Recognizing the ISD principals during National Principals Month is our way of honoring their dedication and thanking them for their job well. First of all... We appreciate what you guys do, and I guess it wouldn't be in the place that we are in terms of our district and accountability and student success without each and every one of you. So, thank you very much.
Next, we have citizens' communication. I'm sorry, we signed up. Next, we have asked our elementary school campus to report tonight. Ms. Strickland?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Maggie Strickland at Severa Elementary. And I want to share two things. I know that you said not data and all this stuff, so I thought I'd make it a little bit more personal. So, I want to talk about the social and emotional piece, especially for our little ones. And usually, I would have a PowerPoint, but I really wanted to kind of start with a little story and then work my way around. So, in pre-K, we have a lot of children that are very active, and they're learning and they're exploring. But often, we have children that maybe don't have the supports and the structures that they need at home. And so, I think what makes Severa so special is the people there. Because from pre-K to second grade, starting in pre-K, often, some of our parents are not sure if their child is going in the right path, or they might just be a single parent, or they might be a parent with just one child, and they're not sure if the child's growth is going in the right direction. So, one of the things that I want to say is about the people, specifically our special ed department. Because in some of our special ed classes, our children cannot communicate. So, if you and I could not communicate, I'm sure we'd get quite frustrated and we would start doing a lot of movement. But we have these wonderful, caring, and I think the word that I want to say is extremely patient people in the positions that they're in at Severa. And it takes a lot for people to be in this position to be able to provide, challenge the children, but provide love, and also provide something called a climate and a culture where you're safe to grow, you're going to be challenged, but you're always directed into the expectations because the expectations are very, very clear. So, with the social and emotional piece, I think that often, many people will say, "Oh, just do this," or "Oh, just..." And I'll give you an example. Parents will always say, "Ms. Strickland, you're so serious. Relax. It's gonna be okay." And "Oh, they're just kids. Kids do that. They fight, or they punch, or they so-and-so." But the piece that a lot of other people don't know is, as we get to know each individual child, they are fearful of why someone punched them in the stomach. And what may seem a nice peaceful little punch in the stomach to somebody, when you hear the story behind the child, there's so much more to it. So, what I want to do today is, I just want to say that our, and I'm saying pre-K through second, but specifically in our special ed unit, we have some very wonderful, caring, passionate people, and they do whatever they have to do to help our children. And so, today, in reference to Severa, I want to spotlight our special ed department at Severa Elementary, and also the teachers and aides in pre-K and kinder. If you ever want to feel challenged, I say, "Come, come. I invite you to come to our pre-K classes. They're a lot of fun, but you have to be able to squat, to sit, to lay, crawl under a table, and do a lot of fun things. You definitely have to be in shape for that." But I just want to highlight with the people. Our business is, of course, education, but you have to start with building relationships. You have to start building relationships with the children. And each of them is so unique and different. And so, we carry our bag of strategies that we think this will work with this one, and we think this will work, and you just have to try as many strategies as you can to help them feel safe and loved. And I just want to give a shout-out to Severa for the people that are making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hold on just a minute. Anybody have any questions? I appreciate you very much bringing that. That's exactly what we want here. We want to know something on your campus that you're proud of, and I'm sure there's lots of things that you're proud of, but to highlight a certain area is good. And we know what it takes to take care of those little bits down there. It's a lot.
Is there anything that we can do to better support you and your campus?
I invite people to come and see you. I don't think... I loved when Ms. Vito had all the principals go and visit different grade levels. And I'm not calling anybody out, but there was certain principals that were like, "Oh, my gosh, there's more than my kids, and look how they're sitting on the carpet. You know what I got?" These, don't let their age fool you. They are bright, and they know exactly what they're doing. They're intelligent. They absorb everything. But I think the biggest thing is, come see what's happening in the classroom. Because people might only drive around and see the playground, but the magic happens in the classroom. It takes, it's a craft to be able to have seventeen pre-K four sit on the table, and that teacher is just doing whatever it takes to have them be captivated by the book, or the character, or whatever. Hence, we dress up, right, and we dance, and put tons of... A lot of animation to our stories. But until you're there, you don't really realize that magic. And I know I have many parents that say, "Ah, we have one. How did she do it with sixteen?" That's the magic.
Do you have a lot of parents involved in it, and do you ask the parents to come in?
Yes, we just sent out a volunteer form because they see that it is a lot of work, and it does require a lot, and stamina, definitely stamina. It's like you have to go work out on burpees to stand up, sit down, stand up, sit down. Because they're little, but they have so much energy. And I think volunteers, yeah, we, after Granger, I sent them a volunteer form. I said, "Yeah, go for it," and so, we're in the process of doing that.
So, do you want us to call the front office?
Yes, yes, please.
Because you're gonna surprise the teachers.
No, that's divine. I can tell you, our teachers are open to have people come and see you work. You wouldn't believe some of the terminology, or you're rich because we try to push... Because often, they'll try to make noises, and they say, "Mm, use your words. Mm, use your words." And then, once they are using their words, "Uh, is that a complete sentence? Uh, is that a..." Rather than just saying shoes, "Can you help me put on my shoes?" So, I know it's so much fun. I just recommend, I invite all of you to come and visit and just follow me in the office, and of course, our teachers are like, "Ms. Strickland, why am I here?" But people need to see the good stuff that's happening, and magic happens in the classroom. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on to our administrative reports, then. Dr. Granger?
Okay, we'll do the superintendent's report first, under Board Priority One, Increase Student Success and Continue Traditional Student Achievement. As you know, district operations are in full swing. The campus administrators are implementing their systems and progress monitors for the year. At a recent TEACH Resource Board of Directors meeting, we were ingrained, as I told you, we're the Region 20 representative for TEACH Resource System for the next two years. So, that gives us an opportunity to be at the table whenever those decisions are made, and we get to implement ideas that maybe some of our teachers are struggling with, or things that are working well for us. So, we're excited about that. We're gonna have our second check-in meeting with the principals during the last week of October. We started these kind of like a six-weeks non-formal evaluation setting to where we can discuss and cuss and argue behind closed doors, including, too. These are individuals, so information that's shared is kind of in a safe environment. Still have all of our vacancies posted on the state platform and our local website. As far as careful safety walks, principals are still doing those. Sometimes the APs are involved, depending on how that's delegated. But we have to keep track of all doors and operational pieces so that whenever we have our intruder detection audits, they ask for that material. At this point, we have been audited at every single one of our campuses. We may or may not have another audit before the end of the year, but they have audited DAEP and Learning Academy this past week, so that finishes up all five campuses. We seem to be the early district in this whole thing. Last year, we were the first one to even see one of those people walk on campus. And so, sometimes that's helpful, and sometimes it's... You just wonder, why are we always getting first? Maybe because we start with D. I think maybe there's no A, B, or C schools in Region 20. We're still in the process of completing our repair projects. The stairs at the high school, after the concrete was poured, was determined by inspection that they were the wrong size. And so, Mr. Gonzalez can attest to the fact that they came in and had to jackhammer out all the concrete, at no cost to us. It was a contractor's flaw. And so, are they through now? I think Mr. Van Fossen went and told them that this was gonna be a weekend project, to not do it all over in class.
Yeah, it was frustrating because we didn't even finish till Friday. And so, now we're sending time to...
Safety and security and personnel report? Vacancies still there, just that. October 11th, last Wednesday, went to a safety and security directors' meeting at Region 20 that was mostly composed of school chief of police and area city chiefs of police, along with the FBI and the Department of Justice. The focus of this meeting was swatting to when people will call in and give a fake threat to disrupt operations. We talked about a lot of useful tools that we have at our disposal. I would send you some information so that you're a little bit familiar with it. This is stuff that we don't necessarily share with the public because it's part of our emergency operations plan. But they discussed that a majority of these come from overseas, and that there are people that will just sit there and call, and call, and call. There's a resource that we would have if a threatening call came in, that they can track that phone number, and they're able to say... This number was used twelve times last week throughout the United States. It was very interesting. I felt, you know, out of place because I was the only one that didn't have my gun in the room, so that was... Got to meet some connections. The Joint Terrorist Task Force, I don't know... Whichever one of the stations in San Antonio, the head of that happened to be walking in at the same time I was, and so, we sat at the same table and made a connection there. And he said, "Hey, anytime that we need anything here..." You know, I told him the connections that we already have, and he said, "There's a phone call away. Let us know if you need anything at all." His name started with a K, like Kelly or Tilly or something. Kelsey? That's not it. That's not it. Sounded very familiar. I look forward to his contact. All of our APs and principals are working on their drill schedules for the 23-24 school year. They always turn in a schedule for us. This also includes contact with, I'll put in a plug, for Medina Valley Sheriff's Department, or Medina County Sheriff's Department, sorry. They now make their Canines available to us and use our facilities for training, and don't charge us anything. So, we have a sweep coming up very soon. They also, in communication with them, the deputy got to be friends with him, and I was like, I remember one of the coolest things when I was in school was the dog came and visited us, and they did a presentation, and showed, you know, this is what their capabilities are. So, he made contact with Ms. Strickland, and I think October the 27th, they're gonna bring both their dogs and do like a hide-and-treat, I think is what he said. So, they'll bring them into the gym, let the elementary kids check it out, watch them do their work. Said one of the dogs is super sweet, interacts with kids. One of them, they will have to keep in a cage, I guess. He said, "It's not as social as the other one." So, we're excited about that. Kids will enjoy it. New safety and security requirements come out on the regular. We're waiting to see how this first special session goes, to see if anything is gonna be attached to... The first piece is vouchers. Obviously, everybody knows that. The second piece will be school funding. There's a big chunk of money that they're hoping to help us upgrade facilities and meet compliance standards. I sent an email earlier today that does a little bit of explaining. They said part of the money that would go back out to schools is, I don't know, $2 billion, but they think it would take $3 billion to meet the standards, whatever that was. Those numbers are, obviously, I'm just using those as an example, but if you have time, read that email. It's pretty interesting. And then, that's all I have.
Yeah, it's, with all the deals that are out there, it's hard to understand what we're doing. They don't know what they're doing. Okay, next, we have Ms. Vito's report, and I believe she needs to give us the ESL program.
That's the thing, is to see if this computer will stay on here. How's it going, evening? Thank you all for letting me give this presentation this evening. This is your ESL program report. This one's kind of fun. You get to learn all about what we're doing for our emergent bilingual students, which is a new term for English learner, emergent bilingual. There are 114 students in our district with a limited English proficiency code of one, and that's about 5.7% of our students. And an additional 21 of the students that we serve in the district were once classified as LEP and have been reclassified as English proficient. So, those students don't count in the 5.7%, but it's great to know. So, if our total is about 1,987, we've got a little over 100 of those students emergent bilingual. One of the new things that we did this year, I want to share with the board, is that we implemented an emergent bilingual accommodations form by domain of language and proficiency level. So, the four domains of language are listening, speaking, reading, writing. And the proficiency levels could be beginning, intermediate, advanced, and advanced high. And so, when we're looking at Tellpass data in a minute, you'll be like, "Oh, okay. That all makes sense." So, what we wanted to do is provide our students with increased instructional continuity as they go from one grade level to the next, based on what's been working in their classroom, based on where they are in their language development, what are the strategies that teachers have been using. And so, we also include their most recently assessed levels in all four of the domains of language. So, just to give you an idea of what that looks like, we give their Tellpass scores on this document. But for each student, we're taking a look at in listening, since the student maybe is rated intermediate, these might be the accommodations that are going to benefit them the most in class. So, this is, if I have a student who's rated intermediate in listening, I would look in this box first for strategies to help address the needs of that student in my class. And so, the same thing for speaking, reading, and also for writing. So, you can see there are a variety of strategies there. And so, it's a really great tool for a teacher who might be new to emergent bilingual teaching, but then also, as a teacher who had a student class this year, I check off what strategies I was using in my classroom this year, and then that document gets turned into the office, but it goes to the next teacher the next year. So, that way, that continuity, the documentation kind of follows the student. But this is not a requirement, but it's something that we do in Divine ISD to make things better for our students. It looks like we're gonna be looking at that top R this whole time with all of our students. Oh, look at there. It went away. So, our ESL program in each campus, I wanted to share with you all. We have ESL-certified self-contained teachers in elementary. They have that same form I just showed you. And the students are also working with Lexia English and Brain Pop Espanol programs through their lab specials at the intermediate campus. The program is very similar. In grade three, it's a certified self-contained teacher, meaning that that teacher teaches all the subject areas. And in grades four to five, we have ESL-certified RLA teachers. And all of the other teachers are also trained, but they're not necessarily certified ESL teachers. Those students at intermediate get access to the Rosetta Stone program through their Bronco time. So, there's programs and time built into their schedule to work on language proficiency. And so, in Divine Middle School and Divine High School, we have that ESL-certified RLA, or we usually call it ELAR, but it's like a very teacher. There are other teachers are all trained, and we have the form as well. We have ESL lab electives at both of those campuses for our newcomer English learners. Those are students who are brand-new to Texas public schools and maybe don't have any language proficiency at all coming to us. So, those students have a class period each day that they are working with either a bilingual certified teacher at middle school, or one of our teachers is a former military linguist, and she just loves language. And she's a perfect fit for this role as well. And they are given access to the Summit K-12 Tellpass program through our Region 20 Title III SSA. And then, they also select quite a bit of teacher supplemental material that they're working with those students on. But during those class periods for these secondary learners, their only focus during that class period is to work on their, developing their English proficiency. It's kind of special that they get to have that time. Here's our STAR data provided by the service center. And so, what you'll see, I kind of highlighted that yellow column because that's going, in the bold, is gonna be Divine ISD, where the regular print is gonna be the region. So, what you'll see in our STAR data, is it pretty? Consistently, we are scoring at the region, very close to the region, or over the region. So, our emergent bilingual learners are scoring as well on STAR as you would see anywhere in the Region 20 area, or maybe a little bit better in some places. And we have just one more slide. These are English learner-only students. Some of the data is difficult to display because it's so few students, so you know the drill. You can't do that. And let me make sure that, okay, did not miss a slide. So, our EB students' Tellpass data provided by the service center as well. What you'll notice is, we do have the score domains of speaking, and then students could be rated beginning, which is a score .1, intermediate, a score .2, advanced, a score .3 or advanced high, a score .4. So, their composite rating would go between a 1 and a 4, with a 4 being a perfect score. So, most of the time, you'll see students falling somewhere between that 1 and 4. And if you see a perfect 3.0, like I do at the very bottom here, that means in fifth grade, our average composite score on Tellpass is a 3, which is advanced, right? So, beginning, intermediate, advanced, advanced high. Tellpass scores are interesting to look at. One thing that's also something to keep in mind whenever you look at Tellpass scores, these do not take into account students' years in Texas public schools, right? So, we could have a student that's in, say, the ninth grade, who's a brand-new newcomer English learner. So, their proficiency level in Tellpass isn't going to be as high as you... Well, they're in a language, right? Well, they're brand-new to language learning, so they're not going to necessarily reflect the score like you might view a student. So, this is just a little bit of statewide data. Big picture, if you look at this, this is our speaking domain, and you're gonna see that very few students in the state are going to score advanced high in the speaking domain. They're to the far right, right? Whereas whenever you look at their listening domain, a lot of students in the state are scoring high in that listening domain. And what that serves to do is, it kind of serves to give these students quite a bit of credit whenever you see them falling above the 2.0 on the Tellpass, where they put all of the scores to get composite. Because that means that they're doing well not only in the two domains that are easier for them to catch, which is the listening and the reading, but that really means that they're starting to make some big gains in speaking and writing as well, which are the more difficult domains. So, our ESL waiver information for this year, we do have a few more teachers on a waiver. The elementary school has ten teachers certified, none under a waiver. So, in the middle is how many teachers are certified, and the top is how many are on a waiver. And then, there at the bottom is how many students were served under a waiver. And what that waiver means is that the English teacher record for that emergent bilingual student is not certified yet, right? And so, we provide opportunities for teachers to work with 240 Tutoring, which is the leading site for teachers to prepare for exams. And so, they do work through that. They get two months of site access, and then they take the exam. They're refunded for their registration fee and the added certificate fee once they pass the ESL certification test. So, we do let TEA know how many teachers we have that are under a waiver and that they will take their test by January, pretty much.
So, for that year, they have until January to take the test?
Well, we say that, it's not that they have until January, but we report to TEA that they will take it by January because they want to know, when are they gonna take it by? And so, well, they're gonna attempt it by January, but if they don't pass on that attempt, they're gonna study for a few more months. then take it.
Give them some time with the six.
Yes, ma'am. That's a great question. This is last year's waiver information. We had two waivers, and one of those teachers was actually very quickly certified. So, I believe that the middle school teacher that we had under the waiver didn't end up staying with us this year, and so we have different ones under the waiver this year. And here is Divine NSD's second language acquisition PD. These are really the highlights instead of being the laundry lists. These are kind of the big ones. And so, one of my favorite ones that I'll talk about just for a second, and I know you can read the rest of this slide, we did get to go out at the beginning of the year to each campus and really kind of wrap our minds around the emergent bilingual students' experience. Teachers got to choose whether they wanted to read this article, that article, or the other article, and we kind of really had some deep conversations about what it must be like to be a newcomer emergent bilingual and in this environment, and then teachers had the opportunity to really have some meaningful conversations around what kind of support to help the learners who most in their classrooms. And so, that was a really, a really, I think, an impactful thing. And the rest of these are also things that we all always do. We're excited about our middle school and high school instructional specialists. They're going to instructional coaching for teachers of emergent bilingual students just because it's a particular area that our teachers care so much, you know? And so, even if they only have one newcomer emergent bilingual student, they want to know, "How do I help this student?", right? So, our instructional specialists are working on increasing their capacity to support teachers in that area. Others' staff development opportunities are emailed out to our ESL teachers as they come available. And then this is our previous comprehensive PD plan for last year. It's a little bit more slim. We tried to give our teachers a lot of time in the classrooms last year, and then this year, we were kind of able to give a little bit more time back at the beginning of the year. And then our campus improvement plans are linked on the district website, but don't worry, they're going to come to the board next month. So, you won't have to wait on for updated campus improvement plans. And does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Abby. Okay, moving on down to our next, the Director's Student Services, this is my report. I have any questions on that? And the Russian Special Education Staff Report. Any questions on the business report? Or the principals report? Okay, any directors reports? Any questions on that? All right, we move to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the board meeting and the budget amendment and to approve a donation from the Don Education Foundation. I think we're going to ask Shannon to explain that budget amendment.
There are three parts to the budget amendment. One is the debt grant for AP exams, and the second one is the safety allotment with HV3. It actually increased, it used to just be around $20,000. With HV3, it gives $15,000 to each campus. They're counting DAP and DLA as two separate ones, and so, yeah.
I was really excited about that.
I was really excited about that, so I'll put that money in there. I'm not taking that money away from somebody. It is just a shift in where it goes, but this year, I'm not taking it away from somebody because it's late in the game. I'm just adding it to there so we can spend it. This year, we're doing that counselor with USR funds that maybe next year, this fund, this allotment can be used for that. The big change in the local and state revenue is with the homestead exemption that will hopefully pass in November, that will drastically change our tax collections versus our state aid. It'll kind of seesaw there. And so, because Dawn's key submission for this month is what is reflected in my first report, and that number 10, I can only be 10% off of my actual revenue versus my budget of revenue, I made that shift in that.
Any questions for Shannon, I guess? Mr. Thomas, sit here. Hoping we understand it. But you do explain it well, thank you. Okay, if there are no questions on this, I'll move to a motion for the consent agenda, which would include all of that.
May I, President, approve the consent agenda?
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Carl, and a second by Carrie to approve the consent agenda. I want to take a wish right now. Cast a 6-0. Thank you. We have a first action item, consider to take possible action to approve the revised schedule.
So, we bring this to the board for approval for the start of our school year. This was something that has been being studied, had been looking at, did some comparisons to other school districts, and what I would ask that the board approve is increasing our FCC LA stipend from $1,000 to $2,500, and our robotics stipend from $500 to $2,500 to be more aligned with the duties and things that they have to keep up with.
And that's mostly because of the travel?
And time. This, both of these last all year long, comparison to other activities that may be some same type of time constraints, this is a little bit more... Both of these programs have changed a lot in the last three years, and so, we want to be able to notate that and be able to keep them going strong.
If I have any questions? I need a motion then.
May I approve the revised schedule presented by Ms. Beedle? Second.
I have a motion by Chris and a second by Henry to approve the revised schedule. I want to take a wish by Henry. This is 6-0. Next, consider to take possible action to adopt a resolution nominating a candidate for the election for Medina County Press of District Board of Directors for the year 2024-25.
So, every two years, the taxing entity in Medina County selects a representative for Medina County Press of District Board of Directors, and Mamie Navarro has filled this position for the last 10 years, so we're looking to stay with that.
Anybody have any questions? I don't know if Navarro's been on that board for some time now. I have a motion to approve the...
May I, President, move to adopt a resolution nominating Mamie Navarro for the election in Medina County Press of District Board of Directors for the years 2024-25? Second.
I have a motion by Henry, a second by Carrie, I think, to adopt a resolution and Mamie Navarro for the election in Medina County Press of District Board of Trustees. I'm in favor. I pass a 7-0. Next, consider to take possible action to approve a resolution, self-certifying micro purchases for federal funds valued below $50,000.
There's a couple of things why this came about. One has the Title I review. We did that through TEA because it's just a form to complete. You have the backup of your audit. Our auditors actually have a page where it says we're low risk, and you submit it to TEA, and it can be approved, and you have to do it each year. Child nutrition funds actually jumped on board this year, which was nice, and so I've already submitted it to TEA, and it's been approved also. Our usual procedures are anything less than $25,000 just requires one quote. Anything between $25,000 and $50,000 requires three quotes or the use of a co-op. Even with the child nutrition funds, anything over $5,000, I still have to get that approved by TEA, and so it'll still be tight. It just gives them leeway when I'm submitting that request for $5,000. We don't do a lot of purchases over $25,000 with federal, even with Abby's or Valerie's funds, but it is just nice to have in our back pocket.
Any other questions for Shannon? Take that motion up, please.
Can you explain it one more time to...
We have thresholds when we're in purchasing, and 199, our general fund that you look at, has certain thresholds, and federal has separate ones. For the most part, they stay aligned. A few years ago, we increased the general fund threshold to 50, just for ease of, we didn't have anybody in purchasing back then at your campus level. There's your scrambling, it's a secretary or a teacher trying to do it after work. And so, the federal noticed that most districts have let that rise, and so federal's allowing them to match, and so you don't have to ask, "Are you using a general fund or federal fund?", what money are you using, why is it different? And so, now they're both more aligned.
Navarro, but one example could be if we wanted to buy something that was $6,500, we had to submit a approval for that.
How much is the level now? Do you want to go to fifty to 10?
Fifteen.
Oh, God.
No, 25, 25. We're increasing it from $24,999 to $49,999. Like I said, we'll still request the three quotes for use of a co-op.
You still have to request different quotes for...
For up to $49,999. If it's over 50, we're going to the board for your approval.
In aggregate for the whole year, so if you use a vendor, it's coming by 10, and next time it's about 20, if it was over 50.
That's for federal funds, yeah. For general funds, it's for purchase, but for federal funds, they're combined.
Oh, okay. I move to approve a resolution, self-certifying micro purchases with federal funds valued below $50,000 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mamie, a second by Carl, to approve a resolution, self-certifying micro purchases with federal funds. I want to take a wish right now, please. Next, consider to take possible action to approve a contact with Purdue Brandon Attorneys at Law for the Appeal services.
Hey, last year, when we didn't pass with the margin of error with our state values versus our county values, we used our regular tax attorney that we've had for years. He admits it was his first time, and we all learned a lot. This time, we reached out to some, a firm landlord experience that's had success in this appeal, in my with her, Jerry and Dr. Banji and I. She showed us some of her numbers. Surrounding school districts also use this firm, and so we're asking to go into contact with this firm just for this service, just for the appeal services. They also do an audit service. That's not like my kind of financial audit, but more of an audit if you have an audit on only the categories in the properties I say.
And there's, there's no cost to sign an agreement with them? Their services are paid through the percentage of the money that they give back, which is 10%. And these folks, they're firm. That's really all they do. Pets, they're, they're wide, so very good people, firm.
So, there would be no retainer or anything, you just let them fight for us and hope they, they, we're just not, we don't, and...
That's true.
Okay, anybody have any other questions? I have a motion if you're ready to approve.
May I, President, approve the contract with Purdue Brandon Attorneys at Law for Appeal and Audit Services? Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Carl and a second by Chris to approve the contract with Purdue Brandon as attorneys at law. I want to take a wish right now. Thank you.
Ms. President, can I add also that she mentioned once this piece of the process was taken care of, she said she'll come and visit and explain as much as, if you guys don't know what time it is and you don't know how little the watch she's... She'll explain as much as she wants to.
Okay, there. Thank you. All right, I believe that finishes our regular business. It is now 7:15, and so we will convene a closed session. Board of Trustees will convene a closed session at 7:15 in accordance with the Texas Public Schools Act for the purpose of discussing time set down in Texas statute code section 5.14074, 5.14076, and 5.14082. No final action, decisions are both to be taken on the board's end of executive session. Thank you all for coming, and thank your principals for your hard work, especially during this month.